This meeting to order today is Thursday, January twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent.
Here.
Counselor Genetino.
Here.
Counselor Cuddy.
Here.
Counselor LaCastro.
Here.
Mayor Quill.
Here. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as for all. And if you remain standing for a moment, a silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Mister Clerk, public announcement, if any?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. We do have one announcement this evening. Um, and that is, real quick, that the next zoning board of appeals meeting for the city of Auburn will be held next week on Monday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven P. M. That meeting will be held here in Council chambers at Memorial City Hall, twenty-fourth South.
Very good. Thank you. There's no presentation or proclamation on where? Public to be heard, please.
This point in time, we will open public to be heard portion of the council meeting. Residents are asked to state their name and address for the record. Please keep remarks to three minutes or less, and please observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decor.
Thank you. My name's Mike Villano. I live at two fifty-eight Seymour Street. On December thirty-first, I decided to take a little walk around the neighborhood with my dogs. And I can't believe the houses there are deteriorating in the city of Auburn. I, it's terrible. It, the, it'll run down, it looks dirty. I, I, I just, and I lived here all my life, and we, my family owned the store down there. But anyway, uh, is there anything we could do here? These landlords, they're buying these houses up, they're renting them out, they deteriorate them to nothing, and they walk away from them. I got a house next door to me. It's terrible. They put a dumpster there, and they, I guess they gutted it with no authority from the code enforcement. They put a stop order on it, left a dumpster in the, in the yard. You know, I know you guys live up in the east town, some of you people, you don't have to deal with this. But I love my home, and I don't want to go out and buy another home at sixty-eight years old because we can't, there's got to be something you guys can do. I mean, I've had it with this, with the problems that we have. And, you know, last week, there was a drug bust on Seymour Street. I mean, which, I, I don't know. And then, you know, then I get this new assessment in the, in the mail, my assessment went up. I, I mean, maybe you guys ought to get in the car and tell, I'm sure you're aware of it. And eventually, it's going to move up to you guys. It's going to come your way. It, it can't stop. It just, and I don't know, I don't know what it is. And but, and I like to know, we have, you guys say you got nine thousand one hundred properties in the city of Auburn that taxable houses. I want, I would like the youth people to tell me, how many houses have we torn down? Really, that we torn down and lost revenue on? And how many more are waiting to be torn down that we're going to lose more revenue? And it all falls back on what we have left as our taxpayers. The taxpayers that are paying their taxes are taking the burden up of these landlords are just deteriorating these houses. And not maybe, and I shouldn't say all landlords, but most of these landlords are buying these houses, moving people in there, they don't care what they look like, lawns, you got the code enforcement, these kids go cut lawns. I have to go up the street and cut a lawn up there just so my house doesn't look like hell. It's just, it's just unbelievable. But I would like you to please get back to me of how many houses that you tore down and what revenue we lost, and how many more are scheduled to be torn down? And I know the one on Seymour Street, they condemned it, but yet they let that kid go in there and gut it without authority from the code enforcement office and left a mess. The house is, is a mess, and we have to look at this. So that's all I'm asking is just, we got to do something about this. And I'm not the only one. I get more phone calls about this, and I'm not the only one. And I'm sure you hear it all the time. I'm sure you hear it all the time. The, the, this town was a beautiful town, and I hate to say this. It, it, our end is filthy, dirty, rotten, filthy town down that way. West Street, Spring Street, all them streets down there, take a ride down there. You will be shocked to see what I saw, and walk it. You got to walk it.
I have to cut you off, sir.
Okay, you cut me off.
Before you sit down, could I ask you give your name and phone number to Chief Slaton?
Yep.
And he will relay it to the city manager.
That's all I ask, guys, and I know your hands are tied. I understand that. Thank you.
We, we did not take offense when you said we all live in the east town. We all live in the city of Auburn, so. That was out of order, but. Is there anyone else that's wanting to be heard this evening? Very well, we'll close the, the initial public to be heard. Were the minutes available?
Next week.
No minutes this week, but we have next week. Mister Dieter, city manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of updates. First of all, related to opioid litigation. Next week, there'll be another resolution before council for yet another agreement with a couple of different companies, distributors, manufacturers of opioids for your consideration. Uh, that is somewhat time sensitive. I believe next week will be the twenty-seventh, and we have to have a response back to the attorneys representing us in that matter by the thirty-first. So you'll have some more information, I believe. Corporation Council sent you information via email this afternoon on that with some background. The second thing is, and I miss, wish Mister Villano hadn't left so quickly. I was going to give you an update on some of the demos that we have going on. And I, I guess, based on his comments, I'll kind of preface the statement with this. We, we look very carefully at the buildings that we decide to demo. If there is a reasonable expectation that they could be rehabbed and utilized and put to good use, we certainly try that. We work with Habitat for Humanity. We work with several other companies that do renovations of that sort to try to get these houses back in good hands, back on the tax rolls and providing decent quality housing. Unfortunately, sometimes they've been in an abandoned state for such a period of time where they've appeared, they've suffered fire damage, things like that, where they have to come down. So as an example of that, and as part of the update I was going to give you anyway, the house at six to eight Garrow Street across from Genesee Elementary, which had been this topic of, or the site of a fire many years ago, had been through several owners, it continued to get flipped to different owners, and then sat open and exposed to the elements for many years, was torn down last week. So that project's pretty much cleaned up. We have another house on Barber Street that's been the topic of a lot of illicit activity, police responses, neighbor complaints, things like that, that is slated to be torn down next week. And if you're familiar with that particular structure, it's another one of those things. And it's on a lot that typically wouldn't be able to be built on by today's standards. There's no yard, there's no off-street parking, and the building is in severe disrepair. The third property, as I had mentioned in the past, was the abandoned Auburn Cement Products Building on Perrion Street, and that is partially torn down now. It'll be completed more than likely within the next week or so. And then the last thing I have is I'd like to hand things over. Within the last couple of days, many of our residents have received notice of the revaluation of their property in the mail. Some folks may not have received that yet. They probably will over the next couple of days. But we have our city assessor, Jeannie Herring, here with a quick presentation on that process for all of you, council, as well as the public, and our city comptroller, Rachel Jacobs, to discuss the financial impact or methodology that goes into that. Thank you, Jeannie.
Like Jeff said, my name's Jeannie Herring. I'm the assessor for the city of Auburn. And I just want to thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to just give you a really quick.
Would you pull that microphone closer to you so we can hear you? Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for letting me give you a brief overview of what's been going on. So in case you get questions, you know where to direct people to come if they have any concerns, okay? Uh, just, I want to put this slide up just to let you know that this was, has been a long project. There's been two of us pretty much working full-time for the past nine months on it. Uh, we, we did look at every single parcel. Working with the state Real Property Services Department, they recently told us that if we had not done this reevaluation, our equalization rate would have dropped to eighty-two percent. All right, so that means that a house that, say, was assessed for a hundred thousand would now be assessed for a hundred and twenty-two thousand full market if we had not done anything. All right, and the reason why we do it is to ensure that the assessments are fair for all the taxpayers and that we make them equitable and as accurate as possible. All right, and contrary to popular belief, a reassessment does not mean that your taxes will automatically increase for your assessment. Although with this reassessment, pretty much every property went up at, at least a little bit to a lot. Okay, and I've talked about this before when I was here, how we determine value, but I'll just review it really quick. So first, we get cost tables from the state, and we can't change those cost tables, but we can change the depreciation curves. So we have projects that encompass all different neighborhoods throughout the city. And so we go in and we modify those depreciation curves until, when we run those curves over sold properties, they start to predict the sales, what they sold for. So once we get all that set nicely, we go to our sales mo, or our manual model. And again, like the cost, we calibrate our manual model so that when, when we run it over the sold properties, it starts to predict what, what it's sold for. So eventually, we get pretty accurate with our costs and our manual model. And we're able to run now those two options over all properties in the city, residential properties. The last thing we do, we select the most, the five most similar properties to your house, to your property. You know, based on your neighborhood, your building style, square footage, and the condition of your home. And that process also incorporates the first two steps, the cost and the sales model is brought in. So all three are used in conjunction. And so that's how we determine your assessment. All right, so bottom line, assessments are based on sales, whether it's the five that are most like your house, or how we build our model, how we build our cost tables. It's all sales. So we've had some people that had some pretty, pretty big changes to their assessment this year. Um, I suggest, I had one person come in today. He was assessed for forty-seven thousand, he jumped to eighty. We talked about his house and looked at comparables, and I suggested that probably he was under-assessed. He had been getting a good deal for many years, and he agreed with me. He didn't quite agree with the eighty-something, but he knew that he had been getting a deal. Also, property, certain properties are selling for more. Like you can't buy a ranch in the city of Auburn, a thousand-square-foot ranch, for less than a hundred and thirty thousand. And you better be ready to purchase it that day because it'll be wrong the next day. So it just depends on that type of stuff for your assessment. I hate to put this light up, but people, we've been getting the question a lot. How can my assessment go up and my taxes go down? That doesn't quite make sense. So while we at the assessor's office are not responsible for taxes or coming up with the levy, that's more of the comptroller's, you know, responsibility. But here is an example. We have a spreadsheet where we show what the county needed to raise, the school, the city, we broke that apart into city and the, the CIP. We look at our twenty-twenty-one taxable, and we know our tax rate added together was thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents per thousand. So now we've raised, we've added two-hundred-and-thirty-three million dollars to our tax base. So now, when you, if the levies stay the same, our new tax rate is going to be thirty-two dollars and sixty-six cents per thousand. So depending on where, how much your assessment was raised, there's a, a possibility that you'll pay less in taxes now, even though your assessment went up. All right, so if you have a taxpayer that doesn't agree with their assessment, please have them call or email our office. We are more than happy to sit down and talk to people, explain how we got their value. It's all, it's all math. It's just mail, math and sales. There's nothing, everything is an open book. All right, and there's our phone number and the clerk's email address if you want to share that. Does anybody have any questions?
If the elderly want to contest their assessment, they call, is there any way we can try to help them go through the process? Because, you know, I mean, they're probably not up to date on.
Yeah.
So it's great that you got a number there. I just hope we just follow them right through with it.
Sure. We have people that call, because we like them to come in so we can talk face to face. But there's some people that, especially elderly, they don't want to be out of the house because of sickness or they're physically disabled, and we're more than happy to talk to them over the phone.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Go ahead.
I, I was just, I had a question for you, Jeannie. The, uh, could you talk about where we're at in the overall process? You talked about how it's, you've been looking at it for nine months. These letters go out. There's still a lot that's going to happen over the next three to four months. Could you kind of just give a general outline of what there is still to come?
So we call this like our preliminary tentative role. And so from now until March fifteenth, we're meeting with taxpayers to review their assessments. It's very informal. They can call and make an appointment. They come in. We set aside fifteen minutes, but we can take more if we need it. They bring us their evidence of what they think their assessment should be. We, you know, show them our figures, and so we do that through March fifteenth. Then the tentative role is published. And then, from the tentative role to the Board of Assessment Review, people can still come and talk to us, but if we need to change their assessment, we have to go through a process called assigned stipulation, which is just basically, we agree, we both sign a paper. It goes before the Board of Assessment Review, and they approve it, which they always do. They kind of have to, but. And then the first week in April, we've scheduled the Board of Assessment Review. And if people are unhappy with anything we've done for them up until that point, that's when they go and present their case before the, the board.
And then when will the role be finalized?
The role is finalized on June first.
Thanks.
Counselor Genetino, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would ask that this, this presentation, this slideshow be posted on the city website because it is not part of tonight's agenda, so I want to make sure the public has access to it.
Sure.
You, you mentioned the state's role in the process and how they put us on notice that if we didn't do a reeval, the steps that they were going to take. Does the state have to sign off and approve on the values that, that you assign to these properties?
When you do a reeval, they need to certify your assessment role. Otherwise, you're not eligible for state aid. And there might be some other ramifications as far as when you do, have things like the school district, where we have our role along with other taxable, other taxable municipalities that are joining together, like for the school. They might have more of a say if we don't get our role certified.
And at what point does the state certify?
Right before I send those letters out.
Okay, so the state had to sign off on that?
Yes.
And if you weren't, if we weren't at where the state felt we should be, what would happen?
We would lose state aid. And again, like I think, they might have more of a say if we're not at a hundred percent in assigning that value so that when we, they figure out the piece of pie for the school budget, say, that we would not be at a hundred percent.
So, so I would assume, and I don't like to assume, I guess I'll guess, I don't want to assume. I would guess the state looks at real, real estate sales, just like you are.
Yes.
In, in Auburn, New York.
Mm-hmm.
And then when you send your figures to them, if it doesn't jive, they're not, they're not going to certify.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Without getting into it too deep, since a lot of house buying is going on now, a purchase price of a house, does that have anything to do with the assessment?
Yes.
So if somebody just set up round number, if they purchase a house for two hundred thousand, no matter what the house was assessed at before, at two hundred thousand?
And it's because of our, our calculation. When you get to the sales comparison, the house most like your house is going to be your sale. And so this is going to be the most weighted sale, and so that's going to go into your calculation of your assessment. There'll be four other houses, but they won't be weighted as heavily as your sale. So that's why, it's not just automatic. It's because of the, the comparable sales.
Thank you. And just for the public's education, and I know we talk about this all the time. This happens every four years. It's, it's part of our city process.
Right.
Thank you.
Anything else? Do we take it from?
I, I read, one question from the audience. I'd rather not get into this, but if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
You're going to have to, ma'am, you're going to have to come to a microphone, please.
Hello. Um, so I guess my question is, can you go over how far back you go in the sale, like the comparison with the sales?
Sure.
And then also, you know, kind of to let people know that the condition of the house, they can bring up the actual condition inside, even though the assessor doesn't actually go inside, if they want to, if they think that it's going to, you know, decrease the assessment.
Okay, for sales, for this reeval, we went back to the last reeval. So we picked sales from January first, two thousand eighteen forward. Arms Lake sales only, meaning that they were not related. It was, you know, on the market for enough time, things like that. And interior condition. We get interior, we, if we've never seen the inside of a house, we make certain assumptions based on the outside of the house. If it's well taken care of, if it's well taken care of, things look good, we assume the interior is also in the same condition. We, um, we look at real estate ads every day. Every time anything comes on the market, we're on it. You know, capturing pictures and taking a look. So that's how we get other interior pictures. So if your interior is not as good as your exterior, you might want to come and bring us pictures.
Thank you.
Yes.
Counselors, all set? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We all have tough jobs at times, but hey, we certainly wouldn't want to be the assessor anytime soon. Thank you.
Yeah, um, most people are very nice.
So Dieter, turn it back to you.
Uh, that's all I have, Mayor.
Very good. Reports from members of council? Counselor, Counselor Cuddy, please.
So I had my first meeting earlier this week. Uh, is the city of Auburn rep on the watershed management council. And it was a great meeting to attend because, uh, Dr. John Halfman was there, and he gave his twenty-twenty-one water quality monitoring report for Wasco Lake. And I just want to share a couple of highlights. Not going to get too scientific because you can't compete with that scientist. Oh, my gosh. Uh, so he, he commented on the improved quality of permitting with new technology. It makes a big difference from previous years when he didn't have as many technical tools and they were depending more on surveys, you know, weekly looks. Um, he told us the Wasco Lake fluctuates between good quality water and intermediate quality water. And while there are years that show water quality improvements and years that show degradation overall, the water quality in the lake has not significantly improved over the last decade. Um, he expressed discouragement over this, and he specifically mentioned intensity and frequency of precipitation events, which he expects will continue in years to come. These deliver phosphorus to the lake through fields and then are streams and tributaries. In this pasture, we had a near-normal rainfall here. But our lake endured a major rain event that everybody here will remember, right, sir? In August, which he deemed the worst floods, bringing up to ten inches of water over a short period and reversing any potential long-term reduction in phosphorus. He said it commands the use of additional and extensive remediation strategies. And then he mentioned the revised Wasco Lake watershed rules and regulations, which we know this, this council approved. It's currently being reviewed at the New York State Department's help, and we hope to hear from them by the end of the month. He mentioned the importance of that and also the reduction strategies outlined in the pending nine-element watershed plan, being critical to the health of all the people there. So, um, not a lot that is new, but for me, it's a new member, really reinforced the importance of the city of Auburn having a seat at that table. Um, and he really appealed to everyone within the watershed, not just farmers, not just lakeshore owners or businesses, but everyone that lives or works there to support the efforts. Um, and I finally just want to mention, just because it's so important, that he did recognize Cuba County Legislature, Emerson Foundation, Finger Lakes, um, Lake Ontario Watershed Protection, and all of the agents and partners and volunteers who make all this work possible. Um, he's going to give this again way better than I just did it. It's just incredible. I was blown away by the information. Um, he's going to give it at the Bob Brower Symposium, but if you can't wait, go just Google Dr. John Halfman to his website, and you will, I hope we have a couple of hours to spend. It's a real education, so just wanted to let you know that that was really important, glad I'm on.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Counselors, anyone else? Resolution number eleven of twenty twenty-two, authorizing a public hearing for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, second by Counselor Genetino?
Council Resolution eleven of two thousand twenty-two, be it resolved by the council of the city of Auburn, that it does hereby authorize that a public hearing be held before the city council of the city on the twenty-seventh day of January two thousand twenty-two at five P. M. Concerning the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three commu, community development block grant annual action plan. Be it further resolved, the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise the resolution in the official newspaper of the city of Auburn in accordance with the governing state and local requirements.
Discussion, counselors? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
And Mayor Quill.
Aye. Agreement Resolution number twelve of twenty twenty-one, authorizing the subrecipient agreement for the Historic Cultural Sites Program under the American Rescue Plan, ARPA. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Genetino, second by Counselor Cuddy?
Agreement Resolution twelve of two thousand twenty-two. Whereas on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one, also known as ARPA, was signed into law allocating three-hundred-and-fifty billion dollars in direct financial relief for state and local governments. And whereas on May tenth, two thousand twenty-one, the United States Department of Treasury issued the interim final rule providing guidance on the allowable uses of the ARPA funds. And whereas the city of Auburn was allocated twenty-one million, three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, fifty-five dollars in ARPA funding and received fifty percent of the total allocation in May of two thousand twenty-one. And whereas the Auburn City Council authorized Financial Resolution ninety-eight of two thousand twenty-one, allocating two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds to support a historic and cultural sites program that would assist the Auburn Downtown Business Improvement District that has been negatively impacted as a result of the COVID-nineteen public health emergency. And whereas under section. public health emergency. And whereas under section six oh two, C three of ARPA, the city may transfer funds to a special purpose unit of local government for the purposes of meeting the goals of ARPA and the interim final rule. And whereas through the Historic and Cultural Sites Program, fifty thousand dollars was allocated to a multimedia marketing campaign entitled to Visit Auburn Initiative, and fifty thousand dollars to support the Tubman Bicentennial Celebration of two thousand twenty-two. Whereas city staff recommends the Auburn Downtown Business Improvement District, in partnership with the New York State Equal Rights Heritage Center, administer the aforementioned marketing and local events under the Historic and Cultural Sites Program in the amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Now therefore be resolved, the council, one, authorizes the mayor or designated representative to execute the agreement, copy of which is attached here to and incorporated herein, and to take all necessary steps required to complete the agreement. Two, the cost of the resolution in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars is to be charged to the two thousand twenty-one Historic and Cultural Sites Capital Account Number H A eight seven six zero four four zero H C S. And three, the resolution shall take effect immediately.
Discussion, counselors, counselors, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, we had our bi-monthly Historical and Cultural Sites Commission meeting. The sites kind of gave an overview of where they were in two thousand twenty-one. Most of them had a, you know, somewhat of a bounce-back year, but they're still down because of COVID. They are both thankful and appreciative of this investment into the tourism market for Auburn, and they feel that this will help them further come along to get back to pre-COVID levels of visitation. So I just wanted to relay that sentiment from all the sites.
Anything else, counselor? Please call the board.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Agreement Resolution number thirteen of two thousand twenty-two, authorizing various subrecipient agreements for the D R I capital match program under the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. We have a sponsor, Counselor Kent, second by Counselor Genatino?
Agreement Resolution thirteen in two thousand twenty-two, whereas on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one, also known as ARPA, was signed into law allocating three hundred fifty billion dollars in direct financial relief for state and local governments. And whereas on May tenth, two thousand twenty-one, the U.S. Department of Treasury issued the interim final rule providing guidance on the allowable uses of funds in association with responding to the public health emergency, negative economic impacts within the community, public sector revenue loss, premium pay for essential workers, and infrastructure investments. And whereas the City of Auburn was allocated twenty-one million, three hundred ninety-five thousand, fifty-five dollars in ARPA funding, and received fifty percent of the total allocation in May of two thousand twenty-one. And whereas on August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the Auburn City Council authorized Resolution ninety-eight of twenty-one allocating one million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds to support a D R I being Downtown Revitalization Initiative Capital Match Program that would assist five local nonprofits within the boundaries of the Auburn Downtown Revitalization Initiative that have been negatively impacted as a result of the COVID-nineteen public health emergencies. And whereas under section six oh two, C three of ARPA, the city may transfer funds to private nonprofit entities for the purposes of meeting the goals of ARPA and the interim final rule. Whereas the city has authorized an amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars to each of the following Auburn Historic and Cultural Sites. One, Auburn Public Theater at Eight Exchange Street. Two, Sewer House Museum, thirty-three South Street. Three, Cuba Museum of History and Art at two oh three Genesee Street. Four, Schwanford Memorial Art Center at two oh five Genesee Street. And five, the Community Preservation Committee Incorporated at seventeen Nelson Street. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Auburn authorizes the mayor of the city to execute the agreements, a copy of which is attached here to and incorporated herein, and to take all necessary steps required to complete the agreements. And two, the resolution shall take effect immediately.
Discussion, counselors, counselors?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'd just like to reiterate what I said during the previous resolution, and express the thanks and appreciation from these sites. As they've been negatively impacted by COVID, these projects that they had in the works have not been able to move forward. This will allow them to move these capital projects forward, investing in their sites, but also investing in the local economy. So again, I just wanted to relay that to everybody. Thank you.
Anyone else, counselor? Please call the board. Resolution number thirteen.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carrie.
Agreement Resolution number fourteen of two thousand twenty-two, authorizing change order number two for the BioSalads Dryer and Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Project Engineering Patrick. We have a sponsor, Counselor Cuddy, second by Counselor LaCastro?
Agreement Resolution fourteen of two thousand twenty-two, whereas on March nineteenth, two thousand twenty, the Auburn City Council authorized bond ordinance number four, two thousand twenty, approving two million dollars in funding for design of the BioSalads Processing and Dryer Improvement Project. And whereas on July twenty-third, two thousand twenty, Auburn City Council passed Award Resolution eighty-one of two thousand twenty, awarding a professional service contract for the BioSalads Processing and Drying Improvement Project to Brown and Caldwell in the amount of sixty-three thousand dollars to complete a basis of design report. And whereas on November nineteenth, two thousand twenty, Auburn City Council passed Council Resolution one eleven of two thousand twenty, authorizing change order number one in the amount of one million, eight hundred ninety-eight thousand, four hundred fifty dollars to continue the BioSalads Processing and Dryer Improvement Project to a ninety percent design. And whereas during the design process, it was determined that the additional failing wastewater treatment processes will require upgrades simultaneously to support the facility and the new BioSalads Processing and Dryer Improvements Project. And whereas components such as the aeration tank diffusers, blower systems, sludge pumping systems, final settling tank components, electrical entrance gear upgrades, and other components of the wastewater treatment plant were incorporated into the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five capital improvement plan, and the BioSalads Dryer and Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Project was approved. And whereas on April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, the Auburn City Council authorized bond ordinance number six of two thousand twenty-one in the amount of thirty-six million dollars in funding to continue moving forward with the project. Whereas the ninety percent BioSalads Processing and Drying Improvement Design funding is nearing completion, and it is necessary to obtain one hundred percent design and bid documents for the entire project. Whereas city staff has reviewed the scope and fee of change order number two, and recommends that Brown and Caldwell of Syracuse, New York complete the following tasks. One, project and design management to include overall management of the design efforts, including project schedule, budget, and assignment of tasks. Two, additional design services including electrical entrance gear replacement, aeration tank diffuser and blower replacement, final settling tank rehabilitation, primary clarifier scum-through replacement, O R F tank concrete rehabilitation, site-wide communication improvements, sludge pump and meter replacement, fire alarm system communication improvements. Three, one hundred percent design of BioSalads Dryer and Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvements Document Package. And four, bidding phase services. And whereas city staff recommends that Brown and Caldwell of Syracuse, New York perform the aforementioned tasks as part of change order number two in the amount not to exceed nine hundred seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. Now therefore be it resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize change order number two to Brown and Caldwell of Syracuse, New York for the aforementioned professional engineering services associated with one hundred percent design for the BioSalads Dryer and Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Project in an amount of nine hundred seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars. Be it further resolved, the mayor is authorized to sign change order number two and related documents for the BioSalads Dryer and Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Project on behalf of the city. And be it further resolved, the cost of the resolution is to be charged to the BioSalads Dryer Capital Account Number H G eight one three zero four four zero K M. That's all I have. Well, I'm sure you would like me to go on.
Well, your first five minutes, I missed a couple of words. Is there any discussion, counsel, Counselor LaCastro?
Mayor, I have to apologize. I didn't mean to second that. I went to my hand up, and I didn't have a chance to stop. I went to scratch the side of my face. So I apologize for that.
Well, you still second it.
Pardon me?
Go ahead.
No, I don't want to second it.
You don't want, you do not want to second it?
I'll second.
Counselor Castro?
Thank you.
Fair enough. I thought you were pulling my leg there.
I went like that, and then Chuck started. I didn't have a chance. I didn't want to interrupt, and he was on a roll.
It'll be reflected in your paycheck. Discussion, counselor, Counselor Genatino?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that we've discussed this at length. Last week, we had a very in-depth discussion presentation on where we are, how we got here, and really the necessity to move forward. Coming up on our agenda tonight, we're going to be calling the state to task, right, to protect our source of drinking water, to do what they really are legally bound to do. And I think we need to set the example, as we continuously have. And this is just another instance of that. We know that the climate is changing. The proof is there. Counselor Kent just spoke of Dr. Halfman's presentation. I actually watched it myself. It is deja vu all over again. It's year after year after year, he's telling us the same story. The writing's on the wall, it's coming. It's here now. And we know that our system needs to be updated. We know that the D E C is tightening rules on how to dispose of the byproduct that comes from treating our wastewater. I feel that Mr. Jensen and his staff have presented a viable solution to do that, and to invest in our infrastructure, and to continue to provide the basic services that people of Auburn not only expect, but pretty much demand. And this is just another step forward in that. He has proven to us that it can pay for itself without raising sewer rates in the immediate future. The fact that we haven't had to raise sewer rates in a couple decades while still investing into the system, I think, is a testament to him and his team. So again, I plan to support this. I just, I just wanted to add that commentary. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Counselor Castro?
Just a couple of questions for Seth. I know you're trying to solve a major problem, and I give you a lot of credit for that, because I know there's not an easy answer. But can you just go back with the dollar amounts, where we started, and where we are now, as far as the amount of the building?
Sure. So as the resolution states, when we initially started scoping this project, it was primarily around the idea of the BioSalads improvements. We had another capital plan, or another capital project within the plan, that identified various other improvement projects throughout the plant. And through, through the initial design process, when we first scoped the project, we were, for the BioSalads project alone, in the twenty million dollar range, is what we were thinking. Some of the initial design studies were coming back around twenty million dollars. And as we continued to add all of those additional phases that were referenced here tonight, in replacing a lot of the existing components that we already have, that are working, or that have served us well and have worked well for the past twenty-five-plus years, those components added into the project to the dollar amount that we're at today. As council approved the bond authorization in the amount of thirty-eight total million-dollar project last spring, we talked about what inflation has done to us. As, as we see it in a cup of coffee that we buy, you know, twenty or thirty percent of a dollar, fifty or two dollars, isn't that much, but twenty-five, thirty-plus percent of a nearly forty-million-dollar project is, is much more substantial. So that's, that's generally the, the track that, that we've been on. It, it would be a shame to not do those other components at the same time. I think that we're going to attract better competition, more contractors, and not have to come back to city council in two years or while we're in the process of completing that initial idea, that initial project of better stabilizing our sludge to reduce our overall financial burden and environmental burden of the current sludge that we have today, and not even be done with that project and be back and say, geez, we've got to add these six or seven other pieces that we already have identified and already know that we need to invest in.
So basically, over eighteen months, this project's gone from thirty to sixty, to be safe, with the extra things you're adding up? Just round numbers.
Thirty-eight million?
To sixty million.
To fifty-eight million.
When we first started this project, the things that we added on, engineers, architects, didn't see what we needed in the future?
As, as I mentioned, we had those identified in the, in the capital plan. They just weren't tied into this project specifically at that point. So they, they were, they were identified. We, we just think that it's, I think, in everybody's best interest to try to incorporate that while we've got a great firm on board, while we have good support staff with us to utilize that expertise now and complete the project in its entirety, rather than piecemeal.
Like I started out by saying, I give you a lot of credit for doing what you're doing.
Appreciate that.
But for a project to go from here to there in eighteen months, I think, I'm not comfortable with it. I won't support it.
I understand. No problem.
I give you a lot of credit, but it seems like there's too many loose ends over the course of that short period of time for that dollar amount to jump that high, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor LaCastro, you all set, sir?
All set, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cuddy?
So, you know, one of the things that identifies probable reasons for, you know, the, the jump in price is you saw an opportunity to streamline things that you eventually saw were going to need improvements in the near future. So it's the kind of planning that, you know, we as council rely on our staff to kind of see long-term planning so that we're not constantly going back and, and fixing, you know, cracks here and there. I will say, I've been on council for eight years, and when I first started, a lot of what was happening was catching up things, you know, in a very, you know, crisis mode way. And what I'm proud of is, as a council, entrusting the manager and staff to do the long-term planning needed so that we can get the most out of these capital improvement projects. And another thing I do want to add to one of the reasons why I'm supporting this is that our sewer fund is self-sustained, meaning that all our sewer fund is self-sustained, meaning that all of the prices will be absorbed in the sewer rates, both wholesale and to the residents. And as you saw last week, those rates maintain a, 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 a price. And if there are increases, they are very minimal over time. So I think, you know, with the planning and the fact that, that there is very little hardship that, that, that the water rate payer, the sewer rate payers will see any significant increase, I think that this is the best route to take. And unfortunately, you know, the, with the current global situation of inflation, which it is not just a, an issue for this country, inflation is, is worldwide. You know, we are doing what we can to continue to do the city's business as best we can. But I, like everything else that's happened during this pandemic, we move forward. We do the long-term planning because this pandemic will end, but Auburn will continue to do its business. So I am going to support this, um, this change order and the capital improvements that it, um, is going to make sure and sure happens.
Go ahead, Councilor Castro.
Back to what I said, I'm not saying this isn't a priority because it is a priority. But if you had to put priorities in the city, the one that Mr. Valano said, if you were coming to me, you wouldn't be coming to me. For six mil, 60 million to clean up the neighborhoods, I'd ask for 80 because he is right. If you drove around this city, it needs help. So, like I said, I'm not saying yours isn't a priority, but we have other priorities where 60 million dollars could go. And that's one of them, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Councilor Genatino?
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't want to put you on the spot, Mr. Jensen. I know that you've said that this improvement can be paid for through the current sewer fund, current rates, and you would be pursuing grant funding from both the state and the federal government. And again, not to put you on the spot, the governor released her executive budget this week. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at what she's proposing, but do you see opportunities there for grant funding for this type of project?
I absolutely do. However, I, I like to always be cautiously optimistic about that. And that's why the rate structure and the, the model that we presented to council last week was sort of that concert, most conservative base approach. I think having projects like this and, and other initiatives, roads, you know, bridges, sewer, water, in, in a shovel-ready position is, is the best, we're in the best position right now. We can be for any of that type of federal or state initiatives, so.
Okay, thank you.
We'll certainly be able to capitalize on, on any type of funding that, that is offered and available. And we already are taking steps towards getting awards for, for funding that's already available.
And, and I guess while we're talking about the money, again, just for the record, that 60 million that we're talking, or 58 million that we're talking about from the sewer fund can't be used for anything else other than improvements at, at the wastewater treatment plant or sewer system.
I believe that to be correct, yes.
We, we can't repair roads with it. We can't demo houses. We can't build parks with it.
Only if those sewer structures are in conflict with the roads. So like on the INI projects and our sewer separation projects, I think we have a unique opportunity to do a complete street type of initiatives.
Sure.
Um, if, if we move forward with, with those types of projects. And a lot of them are in, in the, the West End that Mr. Valano was speaking about. I think, you know, there's, there's a great opportunity there in the Wadsworth Street area, into Seymour Street, North Division Street, to completely rehabilitate some of those roadways, new water lines, sewer lines. We'll, we'll touch just about every aspect of the right of way and allow for some, some improvements as part of that, so.
Thank you.
I believe you're all set, Mr. Jensen. Thank you. Nothing further, councilors? Please call the roll.
Councilor Kent?
Yes.
Councilor Genatino?
Aye.
Councilor Cuddy?
Yes.
Councilor Castro?
No.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry.
Council Resolution Number 15 of 2022, approving council rules and procedures. We have a sponsor. Councilor Cuddy, second by Councilor Genatino.
Council Resolution 15 of 2022, whereas Article 2, Section 8 of the City Charter of Auburn states that the council may adopt rules governing its proceedings and provide for the enforcement thereof. And whereas the council rules and procedures is the document which provides council the direction to conduct council business and meetings in an organized, consistent manner in accordance with local and state law. Whereas the Auburn City Council has reviewed its rules and procedures and revised the documents so that it's up to date and in adherence of local and state laws. Now therefore be it resolved, the Auburn City Council is hereby approve the document entitled Auburn City Council Rules and Procedures Revised, January 20th. It's supposed to be 2022. I'll correct that as a typo, everybody. And be it further resolved, the city clerk shall distribute copies of these updated rules and procedures to all members of the council, city manager and city department heads, and that these rules and procedures are posted to the city council page of the city's website. And be it further resolved, that these council rules and procedures shall take effect on February 1st, 2022.
Thank you. Discussion, councilors? Have we scratched their neck or anything?
No, sorry.
Just, just to, um.
It was up there and it kept going, so I'll say that.
The, the only difference that was mentioned last week, um, just to, for anybody that was, that tuned in, basically in these new procedures is the fact that the city council meets the first four Fridays, the first four Thursdays of, of the month that has five Thursdays. That, that's the main change.
That, yep. And just clarified the public to be heard rule of speaking at one or the other public to be heard.
Yes.
And also, just, also made some changes because there is a new component of the state open meetings law which requires documents to be made available for the public at least 24 hours before the meeting. So that's kind of, that's in there. We, that's kind of practice. We, we do always, anyway.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Councilor Kent?
Yes.
Councilor Genatino?
Aye.
Councilor Cuddy?
Yes.
Councilor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry.
Council Resolution Number 18 of 2022, requesting that the governor to develop, adopt and implement total maximum daily load, TMDL, comprehensive watershed cleanup plan for Owasco Lake. We have a sponsor, Councilor Cuddy, second by Councilor Genatino.
Council Resolution 16 of 2022. Whereas the city of Auburn and the town of Owasco rely on Owasco Lake as the source of drinking water for 45,000 people. And whereas in late September and early October 2016, harmful algal blooms engulfed Owasco Lake and released highly toxic microsystems that were detected in the treated drinking water supplied to the public. Whereas the level of toxic microsystems detected in drinking water supplied from Owasco Lake nearly exceeded the .3 parts per billion of microsystems, a health advisory guideline that would have required New York State health authorities to prohibit public consumption of drinking water supplied from Owasco Lake. Whereas in 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021, Owasco Lake was repeatedly polluted by massive harmful algal blooms that closed beaches, impaired the best uses of the lake, and contaminated drinking water supplied from the lake with microsystems. And whereas the United States Environmental Protection Agency is legally mandated to enforce the United States Clean Water Act and the Safe Drinking Water Act in order to safeguard the public from contaminants in drinking water that cause adverse health effects. And whereas the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation has been delegated authority by the EPA to enforce the Clean Water Act in order to safeguard public health form, public health from contaminants in drinking water. Whereas on November 2nd, 2021, New York voters approved the New York ballot proposal number two, the environmental rights amendment, which added a right of clean water, clean air, and a healthful environment to the New York State Constitution's Bill of Rights. And whereas pursuant to Section 303D of the Clean Water Act, DEC shall list water bodies impaired from their best usages and require development and implementation of total maximum daily load, also known as TMDL, comprehensive watershed cleanup plan in order to reduce the input of the specific pollutants in order to restore and protect impaired water bodies. And whereas New York's 303D registry of impaired water bodies includes hundreds of lakes, rivers, and bays impaired by harmful algal blooms and mandates adoption and implementation of TMDL plans to curtail phosphorus, nitrogen, and other nutrients in stormwater and agricultural runoff that can cause the harmful algal blooms. And whereas extensive scientific research of Owasco Lake and numerous other water bodies from coast to coast has documented the causal association of excessive nutrient loading and the presence of health harmful algal blooms. And whereas the EPA concluded excess nutrients are a primary cause of harmful algal blooms and long-term prevention of harmful algal blooms requires comprehensive reductions in uncontrolled nutrient pollution. And whereas in 2016, the New York State DEC inexplicably changed the 303D regulatory status of Owasco Lake to a non-priority water body pursuant to Section 3B by requiring further verification of the lake's obvious ongoing water quality impairment and did not require a TMDL to curtail, curtail harmful algal blooms in the lake that threaten public drinking water. And whereas in 2016, the Auburn City Council passed Council Resolution Number 156 of 2016, requesting that New York State follow the law and develop, adopt, and implement a TMDL for Owasco Lake without further delay. And whereas the DEC is currently in the process of collecting public comments regarding the draft 2022 303D impaired water body registry that does not require any TMDL, TMDL for Owasco Lake. Now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby request that the governor develop, adopt, and implement without further delay a TMDL comprehensive watershed cleanup plan for Owasco Lake and that the draft 2022 303D impaired water body registry be changed to classify Owasco Lake accordingly. Be it further resolved, the Auburn City Council requests that the DEC and the Department of Health cooperate fully with the EPA to curtail nutrient releases into Owasco Lake in order to fulfill the right of local residents to receive safe, clean drinking water free of microsystems and all other contaminants that threaten public health. Be it further resolved, the city clerk forward certified copies of the resolution to the governor, the commissioner of the Department of Health, the commissioner of the DEC, and be a formal submission as a comment for the current draft of the 2022 303D list public hearing. That's all, Mayor.
Question, councilors? Councilor Cuddy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As Councilor Kent mentioned in the beginning of our meeting tonight, Dr. Halfman from Hobart William Smith gave a presentation. And her bringing that presentation up couldn't be more timely because this resolution is a, an instrument. Being on that 303D list makes Owasco Lake a priority. And although there are other initiatives that have already started to try to address the harmful algal blooms, the rules and regulations that are going through the state agencies, which we hopefully will hear by the end of the month, the Keyuga County Initiative of the Nine Element Plan is underway as well. But this is something that is very important to make sure that we are being heard. Primarily because it is by law that a water body that has these kinds of impairments needs to be addressed and the state is required to do so. One of the reasons why I am so vigilant about this is that we were the first lake that got through the water filtration plant. And, and in 2016, it raised a red flag. Now luckily, we did receive funding to address the, the filtration issues. And thankfully, the microsystems have not gotten to that level since those, since those improvements to the filtration system happened. But the problem still remains in our lake. And not only is our best usage drinking water, it is also the recreation of our lake. It is tourism. It is the engine of our economy and it is the health of our people that we need to, to maintain. So, we need to advocate for our priority listing on the 303D list and ultimately advocate for the total maximum daily load. And I just wanted to, you know, thank staff for working with me to put this together for the 45,000 people that drink the, the water from Owasco Lake.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Kent, are you?
So, uh. Thank you, Councilor Cuddy. A few minutes ago, earlier in the meeting, I referenced some of the comments that Dr. Halfman made. And he stated in his report that he was discouraged over the finding that our water has not improved, the quality of our lake water has not improved significantly over the past decade. But then he made a call to action. He didn't say, this is really frustrating. I'm so discouraged. Why are we trying? Instead, he turned it into a call to action and challenged agencies and individuals and business owners and all of us to do what we can to help improve the water quality. And one thing I didn't mention, but I, I think I'm going to now, is that I didn't just read his report. I went back and read some of his previous reports. And if tomorrow it was announced that the lake had no more phosphorus in it, it's gone. Tomorrow we wake up and all of the phosphorus is gone. It would still take about a decade for the lake to recover so that it would then be considered clear. So, it just, to me, that just reinforces how important it is. So, this is another tool, the tool shed, and I don't see any compelling reason not to pursue this, so I'm going to support the resolution.
Council?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think Councilor Kent makes a great argument. It's just another tool on the tool shed. And that really is the position that we've taken since 2016 when we originally asked for a TMDL, that it didn't have to supersede the Nine Element Plan or the rules and regulations. It, it should be pursued in conjunction with those, that they weren't mutually exclusive of each other. That's the position we've taken. That's the position we've maintained. That's how we've lobbied for this continuously. I started going through my notes and my calendars and I found that I attended a meeting on October 26th, 2016. Mayor, I think you were there. Mayor, I think you were there, it was at the college. It was a mirate of local, state, federal officials. Um, I think Congressman Cacko was the one that called the meeting. And in that meeting, the subject of a TMDL came up. And folks from the DEC got very defensive. And said, "No, you're getting a nine-element plan, TMDL is not needed." And I said, "But, we're legally entitled to it because the lake is on the impaired water bodies list." And it's at, that, it was at that time that the lake was removed. And there was some back and forth and a representative from the DEC was very frustrated with me and proclaimed that a nine-element plan and a TMDL would, combined, would be the gold standard. And since that day, that's what I have maintained, that we want the gold standard for the people of Auburn. We have a legal and moral obligation to protect drinking water, not only for the twenty-seven thousand people within the city, but the other eighteen thousand people in the area who rely on, on that drinking water. This resolution says a lot, but there's two things that stick out to me. Whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency is legally mandated to enforce the U.S. Clean Water Act and the Safe Drinking Water Act in order to safeguard the public from contaminants in drinking water that cause adverse health effects. And whereas the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation has deli- has been delegated authority by EPA to enforce the Clean Water Act in order to safeguard public health from contaminants in drinking water. And whereas on November second, two thousand twenty-one, New York voters approved the New York ballot proposal two, the environmental rights amendment, which added a right of clean water, clean air and a healthful environment to the New York State Constitu- Constitution's Bill of Rights. We don't need to say anymore, we have a fundamental right, it is codified in law in New York State, the clean air and clean water. And all we're asking is for the governor to ensure that that happens. Um, I, I hope that she listens, I, I, I hope that this moves forward. And Counselor Cuddy, thank you for your continued diligence, um, on this matter.
No, everyone else? Thank you, everyone for your words. Clerk, if you will call the rule in regards to Council Resolution Number Sixteen of two thousand twenty-two.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carry.
Will you move down to other business from the council, councilors?
I have a couple...
Counselor, could I, could I ask you and, and everyone, if you, with these masks, it'd be really difficult to hear, so...
I will, I will definitely, thank you, Mayor. Um, so, what I'm gonna do, uh, I have two things I want to, uh, bring forth. The first one is, um, I know that we are still in the, the phases of trying to determine, you know, how we want to address, uh, some housing issues, um, using ARPA money. And I, I just wanted to reiterate, um, especially after Mr. Vilano's discussion of, you know, landlord issues, to, to see if we could, again, go back to this idea of, um, helping, uh, first-time homeowners and, uh, families wanting to buy a house in Auburn using some of the ARPA money for that initiative. And working with, um, you know, working with our department, CDBG, our planning department, um, to try to facilitate that. I know that there's been partnerships with Habitat for Humanity and, and, that was mentioned by the city manager earlier. So, you know, and I also would like to say that, that, um, you know, that there, there is improvement, there is focus on the West End. And I think that, um, you know, given what some of those things that have just started, I think will show improvement over time. But, um, you know, but I, I think if we begin to put some of the, um, ARPA money towards first-time homeowners and, uh, single-family homes, I think that would help some of the issues that Mr. Vilano was talking about. So that's one thing I wanted to bring up. Secondly, I probably should have brought this up during, uh, Mr. Talbot's, uh, snow removal demonstration, uh, discussion, uh, PowerPoint. But I just wanted to, I, I had asked him before if we could, um, just verify the source of the brine that is being used for the, uh, clearing of streets. Um, and if it is from the state, um, I would ask if we could also find where, from the state is, uh, getting that, uh, that brine from. The reason why I want to bring that up, um, and I think Counselor Genatino kinda saw the light go over my head when, when I asked, um, Mr. Talbot the question, is that recently, there was, uh, a, a, some legislation that was passed that does allow for, uh, brine from, uh, gas drilling to be used to clear the street. You know, if that is the case, um, that's, that's the state's prerogative. But I, sitting on council as somebody who's been very, uh, um, vocal about the dangers of that, uh, that produced water from natural gas drilling, I don't want that going on the streets of the city of Auburn, especially while I'm sitting in the, the, the chair, that, um, I was on the other side of the bar advocating against us not getting into that, um, using any, having anything to do with natural gas drilling wastewater. So, I need to know just where that is coming from. And I'm sure there's other brine that's like, you know, mixing salt with water. As long as it's not coming as a, as a, it is a waste product from some oil and gas, um, mining, I'm fine with it, as long as it's not that. But if it is, then we gotta find another source of brine. Or buy different trucks. You know, I, I just wanna, again, before we buy the trucks...
We'll, we'll follow up on that. And we, we have actually a local source for that, I believe. Uh, the Car Guild facility in Watkins Plan, I believe, uh, extracts salt from under the lake in the form of brine, whereas the facility in Lansing pulls it out as a solid product, so I'm not sure where the state's...
That's why I wanted, it's again, like, it's that kinda thing where you, you dig, uh, just trust me, the more you dig, the more you don't want to find out. But I just want to make sure we're all on the same, on the same page. But yes, thank you, thank you, manager.
Is that kind of a pun, that the more you dig, when he's talking about mines and so forth, or just kinda? Counselor, one question for you.
Yes.
Uh, in regards to helping a first-time ho- uh, hopeful homeowner, would that be limited to the... Does that would be their only, uh, their only home, it's not for rental property?
Yes, it's, it's encouraging families to, you know, to, to, um, get out of the cycle of, you know, renting, like, like, again, there's, there's gonna be a, a vetting process, you know, that, that, like, any bank or, but again, um, I know that there are, um, I know that we can, can really put our, uh, our best foot forward to encourage single homeownership and, and give it a brand, like, really kinda show that, you know, twenty-five homes for twenty-five families to show us that, you know, we are doing what we can to put people in houses that we know that we can save, that we can, um, you know, rehab. And, you know, that, that I think addresses some of Mr. Vilano's concerns about, about, um, what he was saying earlier.
Yeah, I, I'm on board with it, but I just want to make sure that this is owner occupied.
Owner occupied, if, if I say single-family owner, but yeah, that's, I guess that's what I'm trying to, to get at. It's not like, yeah, not rental or, it's like, the people that own, owner occupied, I'm sorry, Mayor, that was the term I was looking for.
No, no, that's fine, I just want to clarify that in my own mind, so...
Mayor, one thing, Mayor. In the last, I guess, six months to a year or so, we've seen, um, a few businesses pop up in the city of Auburn, um, I guess, uh, they're called smoke shops. Franklin Street, State Street, one on Grand Ave. I, I'm concerned about the nature of these businesses. I know that, um, in at least one of them, there have been some issues, um, that the, the police have had to deal with. I would like our, if it's agreeable with council, our corporation council, to look in to see if we, as a city, had the ability to limit the, the number of these types of businesses that are opening. There could be a permitting process, um, I'm just concerned. Um, and, and I've received calls from concerned neighbors as well. So if we could just look into that.
Is that agreeable?
I'm all set, thank you, yeah.
Is that agreeable?
I would just like to commend Jeff and, uh, Mike Talbot. I think they did a great job putting their heads together with the snowplow. It wasn't a lot of snow, but people came to me and said that they did a real nice job on the streets, so, thank you.
I'm glad to take credit for that, although I did absolutely nothing. I'll, I'll make sure I pass that along to Mr. Talbot.
Thank you.
And I don't want to know where the brine came from for the storm, though.
Can I jump in for a second?
Go ahead, please.
Uh, if I could, I've actually been, since Mike's presentation and just been asked every time I see Mike, I think he's getting sick of me asking about the brine truck. I don't think it's been used yet. Uh, what his intention is, is this is the first truck that he's brought onto the fleet, it's our newest truck. And the staff is researching how to use it and everything, but I do not think it's been used yet.
And I actually think at one point he mentioned that the brine's made locally, like, they, they mix the salt with the water.
Uh, but we'll get the answer, but, yeah. But I do know that what he's, uh, what he's, uh, doing is he's planning on, you know, he wants to get the whole thing researched so that the brine systems can become part of our future fleets. This is just the first vehicle that's been brought in.
Yes, I just don't want to get too far down the, 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 the situation where it does become this issue where, you know, so, again...
Exactly.
There's, there's, and I'm sure there's ways that, that, you know, you could, if, if the way we're getting it now is totally fine, great. But I'm sure there's other means in which we can mix the solution we need to do, to do what we need to do, so...
But it's our sharp, you know, it's our newest truck and it's a sharp-looking truck. When you see that thing coming down the road, you know it's coming at you, and, uh...
Were you trying to sell me?
No, I missed, uh... I've been waiting to, to watch it be used and I haven't seen it being used yet, so every time I see Mike, and he's, he's pretty much confirmed with me, uh, that it hasn't, they're researching it all, but they haven't used it yet. But what it does is the, the salts, it, it also salts the road, the brine's like the lower half of the truck and the salts inside the house.
Oh, I know, it works great, trust me, I've heard the wonders of how well it works. I just want to, you know, be safe.
All set?
Yeah.
Counselor, is there anything else?
Just one.
Please.
So, since, um, Counselor Cuddy brought up the housing incentives that we were talking about, I just want to add something to that. I would also like to know if we already have existing incentives for, um, homeowners to convert multifamily homes. Just, I think years ago, I seem to recall that we had something like that. So not just to have somebody come in and buy their first single-family home, but an incentive for someone to come into a neighborhood and actually convert a home that was originally a single-family home back to being a single-family home. So, if that could be somehow considered as wow, I think that would be an important incentive. It could help what Mr. Vilano was addressing too. That's it, thank you.
Anything else, councilors? Uh, let's move along to our second public to be heard. Is there anyone desiring to be heard? Take your time, everybody will get a chance. I guess not, then. Mr. Deiger, do you have a request for executive session?
Mayor, if we could, uh, just address council on an update of our collective bargaining process, that would be very great.
Counselor, do you want to add anything else to the agenda? So at this point, I entertain a motion for our, uh, executive session. Counselor Cuddy, second by Counselor Genatino.
Executive session for six twenty-four P.M., Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Castro?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill?
Aye, will be recess for executive session.
Did you bring candy today, Tim? It's, it's left, okay, good, good. It's still there, okay, good, I, my, my son loved it, so, thank you.
It's still there, I've had to walk by it about a hundred times this week, it's impressive. Yeah, you didn't want, you didn't want me to lose momentum. That's right.